And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those of you attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. I ask that you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, but when we complete that, please remain standing for a brief moment of silence in memory of Mayor Dick Lockwood, who passed away January 11. Thank you. Now it asks the city clerk to please call the rule.
Mayor Tulley?
Here.
Counselor Sealy?
Here.
Counselor Powers?
Here.
Counselor Scamperey?
Here.
Counselor Stevenson?
Here.
Counselor Trim?
Here.
Counselor Weaver?
Here.
Quorum present.
We do not have any presentations or public hearings tonight, so that brings us to personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have five minutes. Seeing no one, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raised hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have five minutes.
I did, oh, it just popped up. The first individual is registered as Nicholas Wright, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self muted, sir.
Good evening, counsel. Can you hear me, Kathy?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, counsel Nick Wright, Kenny Bunkman, NA Wright Creative Construct LLC. Sorry I couldn't make it over there tonight. It's quite a drive every time I go. I'm coming before you again this evening, just to let you know that I am present and listening. I'm strongly encouraging each and every one of you to publicly support this project at this time. Time is of the essence. Still haven't had much information from the city in any type of capacity as of today. Certainly not starting to go down the path that I originally envisioned. I think this is a great project for the city. I'm putting my own resources out on the line, and I'm asking you, please publicly support this project so that we can get moving on it. The success of this project is based fully on the location of the project, the amount of the land originally that it was purchased for by Billy in the previous RFP, as well as the timing. And I can't be sitting on an attraction for over a year and a half without operating funds. I'm in need of these specific pieces to fall into place to make this attraction happen. Frustration is starting to get quite high. As many of you probably know, I had to hire Andy Silver as my attorney last week, and that's not a threat. I just, we need to get, I need to get some support here from the council publicly. I'm fighting a battle behind the scenes that I don't believe is in the best interest for any of us at this time. Thank you for your time and have a good meeting.
Thank you, Nick.
I do not see any other hands raised, ma'am.
And that brings us to correspondence. We have any correspondents tonight, Kathy?
We do not.
Moving on to our consent agenda. That the claims as enumerated in general fund warrant 2-2024 in the amount of $2,159,116.73 and library warrant number 2-2024 in the amount of $0 and capital fund warrant number 2-2024 in the amount of $1,200 and community development fund warrant number 2-2024 in the amount of $0 and community renewal fund warrant number 2-2024 in the amount of $0 as audited, B and the same hereby are ordered paid, I'd so move. Second discussion. Kathy, please call the rule.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so that brings us to items for council action. Our only item of business will be read by Fire Chief Kenny Stone.
Good evening. This is a resolution authorizing interim city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with MJ Bourbon, Inc. Whereas the city of Augsburg is desirous of submitting grants in support of fire service, including but not limited to FEMA Assistance to Firefighters grant, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, along with applicable New York State, CFA, and SAM grants. And whereas MJ Bourbon, Inc. has successfully guided companies through the process of obtaining government contracts, grants, and loans at the federal, state, and local levels. And whereas Julie Berlini is the chief executive officer of MJ Bourbon, Inc., Julie has over 25 years of experience securing funds for our nation's first responders, hospital systems, municipal infrastructure, school districts, and corporate entities. Now therefore be it resolved that the interim city manager is authorized to enter into a contract for professional services with MJ Bourbon, Inc. in accordance with the terms and agreement attached hereto for the sum not to exceed $10,000. Be it further resolved that the expense for this service will be charged to A2665.
I'll move that. Any discussion?
You know, this was brought before us before, and we had quite a lengthy discussion with the fire department, et cetera, and it seems this lady has an excellent track record. We wanted to approve this before, but the last council wouldn't, and I'm more than happy to support it then, and I'll support it now as well, so.
Yeah, I would just say, she was, she worked with myself and the interim city manager last year and guided us through some grants. She was able to keep the fee the same this year, so I'd like to publicly thank her for that. I'm looking forward to working with her.
Good. Anyone else? Yes, Storm.
Chief, in addition to new grants, does this include like safer grants, et cetera, if they can become available?
So this will include the safer grant. If we, if it is the council's desire to submit a safer grant, it'll bring, it'll be a separate resolution brought to you, but she will be the one writing it.
I'm also assuming that we can use her services for grants for police department and other emergency services?
These grants are just specifically for the, for the fire department at this time.
Okay.
Any additional grants going forward with Storm mentioned the safer, excuse me, the safer grant would come under the 10,000?
Yes, the safer, the AFG, she had mentioned to city manager and I about some other grants that I didn't know that the fire department actually qualified for. The interim city manager did know about those, but she's willing to assist us with all of those.
Cool. Like Dan, I supported it last year and support it again this year.
Yes, I did note that the list of clients for this, for this firm is impressive, so I think we'll get good value out of this decision. I do have an amendment to make, though, and that involves the accounting for this. Account code A2665 is a revenue code, and so I would like to see it as an expense code. So I'm going to make a motion to amend this resolution to change account A2665 to account A3410.515, which would be Fire Department Consultants. Any discussion?
And that would include a future amendment?
Yeah, we'll need a budget adjustment at some point to fund it, but that can be done at a later time. All right, Kathy, can we vote on the motion to amend?
So this is to amend. Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
And now the vote on the motion as amended.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Counselor Sealy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperey?
Yes.
Counselor Stevenson?
Yes.
Counselor Trim?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
All right, and that will bring us to old business. Does everyone have any old business to bring before council tonight?
I would have one item, Your Honor. Could we get an update on where we stand with the neighborhood watches at our next council meeting? You know, we had quite a group here that was interested in those, and maybe we could get an update and see what the interest level has been and what we can do to go forward with that.
I'd be happy to give a more detailed update on that at the next meeting. I did actually just speak with our police chief on that late last week. There was pretty limited formal interest in the applications we received for Neighborhood Watch, but we are going to do some additional outreach via the city's Facebook page and a press release to try to encourage some more participation, and we are going to follow up with a third public outreach meeting that we're working on for the spring. So, but happy to talk with the chief and get something more formal for the February 12th meeting.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I don't know if it comes under old business or not. How's Mr. Noble working out at Field Hackett's?
He's had some difficulty with financing with the local, the local banks. He believes he has something worked out with a national bank, but it'll be February before we have any firm update or commitments. I believe, I believe he met with Andrea about how long the grant that he received could go before he had, before he would lose it.
Yeah, he and I had a meeting on December 29th, I believe, to go through the grant and make sure that he understood the terms and the period and that we still are required to do reporting on the grant.
All right, anybody else old business? All right, so that brings us to new businesses. Does everyone have any new business for council tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a, an announcement. If, if, if anything, I've spoke with fellow counselors and the mayor, including the city manager and city clerk. I'm retiring from state service at the end of this month, and in that process, there's a retirement, and through the state comptroller's office, there's an aspect called Article 15. It's retiring as a civilian item. So I'll be resigning my position in the Department of Corrections and Community Supervision and retiring on January 30th of this, my last day as a city councilman will be January 30th of this year, with the retirement date set for January 31st. This is strictly for retirement purposes. I informed the mayor and they shortly thereafter, excuse me, will commence a vacancy committee. I have every intention of putting my name back in to serve on the city council and fulfill my term that I was elected to two years ago, but as I mentioned, this is strictly a retirement issue, and it's through legal aspects through the state comptroller's office, who I've worked very closely with, to assist me in this endeavor. And if anybody should have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me or email or whatever the case may be, but I just wanted to inform the public. I have every intention of putting my name in to, to obtain the seat back, and that of course will be an open, open forum, and, and that's the way it should be. So I just wanted to announce that.
Thank you for sharing that, Mike. And then from council's perspective, then we would wait for a letter from Mr. Counselor Powers indicating he is resigning his position at city council, and at that point, we, sorry, retiring from city council, and then at that point, we can form the vacancy committee and ask them to begin this process?
Mayor Andrew, Mayor?
Yep, absolutely.
So if Counselor Powers would be willing to put it in writing with the effective date that you've just indicated, that would allow me to contact the members of the vacancy committee and start the process, because they will need to solicit names, that is part of their requirement, but we could just kind of streamline the process if we're able, if I'm able to reach out to them now, because they will need to put forward three names in accordance with section C10 of the charter, and at that point, it has to be, those names have to be given to council at least seven days prior to the meeting at which council will vote. So if we, if it is council's wish, we can streamline it?
Yep.
And just move it along quickly, just so that we continue the business of council.
So would the timeframe be such that council might entertain a list of three names from vacancy committee for its second meeting in February?
There's the potential it could be the first meeting in February. If I can pull the vacancy committee together, make contact with all of them, and they perhaps could meet sometime this week, we could immediately start the request for those who may be interested. We could get that out.
Okay. Right, so once you have Counselor Powers' letter, then we can start the process?
Yes, sir.
Any questions from council?
I want to say congratulations to Mike on your retirement.
Thank you, Dan.
Good for you.
Thirty-four years. Appreciate it.
And look forward to continuing working with you on council.
And the other new business for council tonight? Okay, that brings us to items for discussion, and we will begin with interim city manager Andrea Smith.
So at the request at the last meeting, I have updated the request for proposals that the city used in the past for 17 Main Street. The contents of the document is largely the same, but focuses instead of on the whole parcel, on parcel A, which is just slightly more than half of the .94 acre parcel. Updated the demographics so that they reflect the most current data from the American Community Survey, which is from, from 2022. But largely, this is requesting the same information that we've requested in the past, and I wanted to give council the opportunity to have any feedback on this. We have discussed this at length with you as individual members of council, and I've gone back and forth with the city attorney. It would be my recommendation that if council does want to move forward with the RFP process, that we would, council would entertain a couple of specific items this evening, including the duration and time in which the RFP would be out. Typically, it's four weeks. It could be longer if council wants something longer so that. And then it is the recommendation of staff that this would go out as soon as we close on parcel A, acquiring it back. Right now, we don't have ownership of it, so it wouldn't really be appropriate to put it out for RFP at this moment in time, but that council would consider allowing us to do that in the essence of time following completion of the acquisition. And then, thirdly, we would traditionally advertise this on our website and through a legal notice publication as well as a news media release. If there's something more specific that council would like, additional advertisements or particular publications, but that's also something I would ask for your feedback on.
Thank you, Andrea. I believe it'd be fair to state, inform the public before we begin deliberations that at 4:19 this afternoon, administration and city council did receive from Mr. Wright a purchase offer of $10,000 for parcel A of 17 Main Street. So I wanted to state that for the record. So with that, I'll entertain discussion by council.
I'd like to start that discussion, Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please proceed.
I saw Mr. Wright's proposal. I was awfully pleased that the fairies are still interested in parcel B and putting up a warehouse that gets beautiful designs, the senior designs for the hotel. I'm really, it's, it's exciting to see this, this, this area start to boom here, and, and I appreciate the fact that they're gonna purchase parcel B rather quickly. In terms of parcel A, I know Mr. Wright called up tonight, and first of all, I want him to know, and I hope the rest of council agrees, that I personally, as a counselor, support this project wholeheartedly. I'd like to see this take off ASAP. I do not want to see it slowed down. I would, I would like to see this process expedited very fast. I would prefer actually skipping the RFP process and selling the property outright as the city has a right to do. And if you really stop and look at it, we have one developer that was gonna develop the property, and he's, he's backed off because he's still developing somewhere else, I'm very happy about that, very close by in proximity, and Mr. Wright wants to buy the property and get moving. Time is of an essence here. If I can't get council support on that, then I would like to see the RFP process expedited even shorter than four weeks. I don't think we need to wait for the actual closing. I think at the signing of the contract, which should have taken place at about 5:30 this evening by Mr. Hosmer, as he told me he signed, we can, I'd like to see us start proceeding right now, even before the final closing with the RFP, if council doesn't have a desire to sell the property outright. But, but it's, it's pretty obvious that, that Mr. Wright's serious, and he's very serious about his timeline. I'd like to, I'd really seriously like to get moving on this, the shortest possible route to getting this property in his hands and, and moving forward in our entire Marina District. And if he's still listening, Mr. Wright, I want you to know that I do fully support this project wholeheartedly and committed to making it work. I suspect the council does as well, and I'm sure you'll get a chance to hear right about now, because I'm done.
Can I ask a question? Are there any legal obstacles in place to just selling this outright? You said there weren't.
I don't believe there is. So basically, I believe the process, once a property goes through a tax auction, the city has the option. Basically, I think Andrea explained this to us in update. We have three options. We can sell the property again at, at, at an auction, public auction, and the problem I see with that is somebody buys property just to sit on it or whatever. And, or we can do an RFP and give multiple parties a chance to, to commit, and that puts conditions on. You know, in the case of Mr. Hosmer, he put it, he put his own condition in that he would start building within, I believe it was three years from the date of closing. And so Mr. Wright has offered to basically pick up his schedule, and he will start building within that same three years if we desire to do that and by selling this property to him. And so, of course, he's gonna have some issues, he's gonna have to go through planning board and things like that, and we have the option of just selling the property, once it's gone through tax auction, as I understand it, and if you need to correct me, Andrea, please do, but I'm pretty sure that we can just sell this property outright like that to somebody. The RFP process sort of protects the citizens in the sense that we still have a little bit of control with property and how it's gonna be let go and sold, so. And we can do the same thing with this contract, but.
I would ask Andrea, has Counselor Scamperey explained our options correctly?
The property was acquired through the tax sale foreclosure process by the city initially. When I was signing the purchase offer today as the purchaser, it occurred to me that we are purchasing this property back, and therefore there is a little bit of a nuance in whether or not the purchase, the property as it stands now, as a subdivided parcel of the former Lee 17 Main Street, was in fact acquired by foreclosure, and do we still have the ability to do an arms-length transaction? That is a question that did only come to my mind this afternoon as we were signing the purchase agreement. So that's a question for the attorney to talk about, and I know we do have an executive session with him this evening, so I, for that reason, would encourage a little due diligence on that. This is something very different that we have not done before. The property 17 Main Street was, was acquired through tax sale foreclosure. It has subsequently been subdivided, and we will be purchasing it back. We are purchasing it back only through a restrictive covenant, so I also don't know if that gives us some flexibility with our ability to do some type of an arms-length agreement versus a public process. So there are some questions that I think are unresolved at this moment, and having only received Mr. Wright's email late this afternoon, they have not been able to be addressed.
Your Honor, I'd like to weigh in on this. If we do have to go through the RFP program of our situation, I think that we should do much less than four weeks, and I think that we also should start this process sooner than later. I don't think we need to wait to actually acquire the property. That could be another three to four weeks to acquire the property, and then four weeks for that, that's two months that we've lost for any developer. So I would like to see us, if not able to sell it outright, but if we have to go through the RFP to really move that timeline along.
I'd like to echo the thoughts. We need to move on this fast and get it through. You know, do the right thing, you know? Let's get it, let's get it passed. I'd like to see it, see it passed this evening. I will pass the attorney and executive session also, but my question will be, can we put a deed restriction or a covenant on an outright sale similar to what we did when it was purchased previously by Mr. Hosmer? So it looks like there's, is there support in this council for an outright sale? Yes, I, I would be in support of that if we can do it legally, and I am in favor of some type of covenant or deed restriction on it, similar to what Mr. Hosmer had.
And that's so that it doesn't, it doesn't fall through the cracks and maybe end up sitting or not getting developed?
Right, right. I trust, I trust Mr. Wright explicitly, but there's always a chance we sell it outright, he turns around, somebody offers him $20,000 for, and it's sold. Now, I don't think that's gonna happen, but we need to protect against that happening. I don't either, but you know what? It's very important here, something I would do want to mention, because I just came off a council that hit a brick wall for four years, and what the message we're sending right now to the citizens of this town and the broader community is this company is interested in, in development, in economic development and moving forward expeditiously. Thank you all very much for, for supporting that, and if we can do it, and, and I see that, and that's what we need to do, I think, is tell the world we're ready for business and beyond what, not, not only what was, but we're gonna come back better. We're gonna bring this city to new heights. Exactly.
What, what are we looking at here for a timeframe to, okay, so we've signed the agreement. Is there any, I suppose this might be a question for Dan, and not that you wouldn't know, but being in real estate, is there, is there a timeframe here? I know Mr. Wright's under a pretty strict guideline or a timeline here. What are we looking at for closing for us to be able to take that property back effective through the sign? Is it done?
The purchase agreement has a closing date of honor before February 15th.
So any legal, is there any legal aspects that need to, you know, I mean, with closing or, you know, financing a deal, finishing a deal?
It could actually come sooner than that, Andrea, that's just the target date.
So that's, that, I guess my question is, is there like any hangups with the closing cost or anything, anything like that? Any other legal aspects that need to be done? I, you know, for the record, and I told Mr. Wright this when, one of the first meetings he was here, I fully support his, his project, you know, and I support the fairies and, and, you know, going forward, as Dan mentioned, you know, we're, we're, we've got a good opportunity to start developing some, some aspects of, of that Marina District that you work very diff, very diligently to, to get cleaned up and, and get open for business. And, you know, I think the sooner that we can do this, the better, but I also don't want to compromise anything that might come back that would hinder the ability to keep it moving swiftly. So I guess I'm just kind of caught in the aspect of any legality that's going forward that would, that would hinder this process instead of just snapping our fingers and having a project pop up, you know? So that's, I don't have any concerns, you know, he's, he's using his own finance.
have any concerns. You know, he's, he's using his own financing to do this. Like, it's a great project. And, and, you know, the quicker we can get it going, I don't want to just steamroll it and, and have it come back and be a point of frustration for Mr. Wright in any capacity. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at.
To answer your question, Councillor, if both attorneys put it on a fast track, it could close within two weeks.
Any other comments from council?
I just want to second what Dan said and say thank you to Mr. Wright for his patience and for his commitment to his hometown.
I appreciate Mr. Wright's anxiousness to go on this process. I believe it's an exciting project for the city. At the same time, personally, because we have more than one contractor interested in this parcel, I believe in fairness, the RFP process should continue, should be initiated. But having said that, I get the sense that there are at least six counselors who are in favor of moving forward with direct sales. Is that fair to say? Depending further discussion about legalities or not.
I think it depends on what the attorney says or we're able to do. Because I also have the same concern that Andrea does, that if we haven't taken it back to tax sale at this point, that may change what we're able to do.
All right. So I, I presume that at this time, there's no action to be taken on parcel A other, till we have further discussion with, with staff and with our attorneys to learn exactly what we can and cannot do. And just, and just for further comment, parcel B, Andrea and I had a conversation earlier this week, telephone conversation with the principals of Atthe Docks. They have submitted a timeline to the city with their plans for the construction of a storage warehouse that they believe they need for their, for their bigger project across the street. And I think, I think we would like some feedback from council as to a, a timeline proposed to proceed with parcel B. And my suggestion would be, you know, no later than May 31st, that Atthe Docks provides the city the information they need to close the sale to, to their firm by that date. And if that doesn't play place, then we look to consider how we would then move parcel B. And in the correspondence from Atthe Docks, they indicated they would need, or they would like two years after date of purchase to complete the project. Personally, I'm not opposed to that timeline. Any, any reservations about taking that approach from anybody in council?
I think that it sounds really good there. I'm not sure the holdup on, on the purchaser or closing on it, but I'd like to see that done sooner than later myself. But other than that, everything else sounds wonderful.
Yeah. I agree.
All right. So anything else tonight on 17 Main Street?
You know, I just want to say, I fully support the Fraries as well, what they're doing. You know, they sent me the plans. And it just, it's really gonna clean up the area. It's, it's really gonna put Augsburg on, on, on the map here. And thank you, Fraries, for what you're doing. Chris?
All right. Anyone else on 17 Main? All right. Any councillor for anything on items for discussion?
I have one.
Yes?
We're in the 22nd of January. I've already received my first two complaints on junk cars and garbage accumulating around houses. I'm only taking that to Codes or whoever I need to take it to. I understand we're shorthanded in almost every department, but some of it is extremely obvious simply by driving by. And I'd like to see if we can kind of alleviate some of the messes that we have in some of our neighborhoods.
Thank you.
I don't have a solution. We're short on manpower, but I just think we need to bring it to the public's attention that we're aware of it and we try to do something about it.
You know, on that notion storm, I had similar complaints. And I happened to stop by Codes not too long ago and had a chat with them. They're limited on a lot of what they can do, unfortunately. But they suggested maybe they will come to us with some, some cleanup language to give them a little bit more teeth. And, and maybe we could start cleaning up. So I'm hoping that they do. Obviously, through the interim city manager, but we can get something in, in the attorney, of course. But that would be nice, because there is a lot.
Do some liberties being taken around the city.
I know I have one.
With the lack thereof of.
Some, a couple of years ago, it took us almost two years to get the tow truck in and get it towed away, you know, so.
Right. Anyone else items for discussion? I do have a couple. Just want to note that last Thursday, January 18th, Councillor Stevenson and Weaver and I attended the swearing in of Nolan Baker as a patrolman in Augsburg Police Department. Council extends our best wishes to patrolman Baker and his family as begins his service with the Augsburg Police Department. Like to inform the public that tomorrow at 3:30 here at City Hall Chambers, six new firefighters will be sworn in, including the city's first female firefighter. And the public is invited to attend that, that ceremony. Since the last meeting, I researched the St. Lawrence County Youth Grant that Mr. Loffler spoke to us about at the last meeting. The next round will take place beginning January 1 of 2025. Expect applications for these grants to become available in May or June. And so I've made a note of that in my calendar to share with what hopefully will be our next recreation director at that time. But one way or another, to make sure that Augsburg's involved with that grant process and the wholesome gets some additional funding for youth programming in the city. So I thank Mr. Loffler for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else? Right. This brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium. You will have two minutes. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address city council, please use the raised hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time. And you will have two minutes.
The first individual is registered as Ann Frary, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
I'm sorry, Mr., sorry, the mayor has answered our question. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next individual is registered as Walter Bracy, and I will unmute that individual now. It appears you are self-muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can hear you.
I'm just wondering if there's any update on the cheese plant project?
I mean, is there a, a timeline for the demolition of the cheese plant?
So I did have a conversation with the demolition contractor just this afternoon. We are just kind of going through the formalities of getting documents to and from the landfill, getting our I's dotted and our T's crossed for the waste, which is contaminated, to get all approved. But they, they are finishing up their job in Watertown. And after that, they're planning to come to Augsburg. They have a few other jobs that they're doing in the area until this one is ready to go. But it is soon. I, I asked for a date. I did not get a date. So, but it's, it's coming.
Thank you. Now that is unusual protocol. I appreciate you answering the question at this time. Kathy, anybody else unless Mr. Bracy's not done?
It appears he has self-muted himself. So I do believe that he's done. And I do not see any other hands raised.
Do I make a motion during the executive session to discuss proposed pending or current litigation and the medical, financial, credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation? I saw move.
Would you call the rule, Ken?
Councillor Sealy?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamply?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Approved.
And then I will note that the assistant, or the city manager Andrea Smith and city attorney Scott Goldie will join us in executive session this evening. We do not anticipate any action following executive session. So I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.